I was asking if you're ready.
Yes, yep, we are ready. Good afternoon, it's 4:30 PM on Tuesday, August 15th, 2023. We will call the City Council Meeting of the City of New Ulm to order. At this time, item number one is the consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
Come over.
Second.
Motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 2.1, Public Hearing on the Vacation of a Portion of the Elm Street Right-of-Way. Mr. Snowbrick.
Yes, Madam President, members of the City Council. The portion of Elm Street that is proposed for vacation is defined as the east, from the east right-of-way line of North Highland Avenue to the northerly extension of the northeasterly property line of Outlet 155. If you look on the screen, North Highland Avenue, and this is Outlet 155. So the City Council received the vacation petition and set the public hearing date at your July 5th meeting. The petition was submitted by Matt Mathewitz, a partner in Prairie Land Development, LLP. Prairie Land Development is the owner of property located on both the north and the south side of the right-of-way that's proposed for vacation. And the city charter requires an abutting property owner to sign a petition for vacation, so they meet that requirement. The Elm Street right-of-way that is proposed for vacation is bounded on the north side by mining activities, and on the south side, it's being farmed. This particular right-of-way, the Elm Street right-of-way, connects North Garden Street with North Highland Avenue. This right-of-way has not been improved, and only the easterly portion, that's a portion by North Garden Street, could be developed in the future. Depends on what type of development takes place in that location. This right-of-way has an elevation drop of approximately 100 feet from North Highland Avenue to North Garden Street, and that elevation change takes place within a 200-foot section. And you can kind of see it here. That we're talking about the vacation for is the one that's on the upper part of Elm The amount of right-of-way proposed for vacation is approximately 87,000 square feet. The vacation of the right-of-way will have no impact on existing utility systems or the installation of future utility systems. The right-of-way is not designated as a major street in our comprehensive plan. Oak Street here, and the extension of 16th North Street, which would be here, are both identified as collector streets in our comprehensive plan, and so those are going to be the two major streets in this area. So Elm Street will not serve that function. Staff would recommend approval of the vacation for the following reasons. Number one, the vacation would facilitate future orderly development of properties in this area. Two, city public utilities, commission departments, and local communication companies have no objection to the vacation. Three, the vacation would allow mining by MR paving and excavating to continue in a southerly direction. Four, it would allow future grading and property elevations to better match existing contours and elevations. Five, it would allow for the continued use of existing natural resources in a productive manner. And six, the street right-of-way is not required for any current or future street purpose. Now, as far as conditions, we've identified four. Number one, prepare a vacation plat and file the plat in the authorizing resolution with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Two, that we waive the payment of the approval fee of $14,725. The area that is designated, this area is designated for future residential development in the city's comprehensive plan, and as a result, a future property owner is going to have to dedicate new streets to serve the new lots that would be platted in this area, and that owner provides those streets to the city at no cost. And so it seems like it's an equal exchange that would be taking place when this area The number three, Outlet 154, which is right here, is topographically divided into a north and a south half by a ravine, and the ravine runs through like about here. And the north section is currently being farmed as part of a larger tract of land that includes other owners. So this portion here is being farmed as part of this larger parcel. And if the area is mined in the future, access to that property could become more difficult. And so if the city deems it necessary, the owner of the property that is doing the mining would need to provide access to Outlet 154. That would be a condition. This also could be accomplished by a private access easement. And number four, mining activities in this area will require the approval of an interim use permit by the City of New Ulm. Interim use permit requires a public hearing. That would, I might also note in the attachments that we provided you with two conceptual layouts for lots in this particular area. I think we need to emphasize that these are conceptual. We don't quite know what the future holds, so it could change a little bit, but it gives you an idea that, you know, that we can provide, you know, residential housing in this particular area of the community. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Snowbrick. At this time, it is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would care to be heard, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Nobody wanting to be heard, I guess I'll close the public hearing and offer a resolution approving with conditions the vacation of the portion of Elm Street from the east right-of-way line of North Highland Avenue to the northerly extension of the northeasterly property line of the Outlet 155.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Betker?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Item number 3.2, Temporary Liquor License for State Street Theater Company.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary on-sale liquor license for the Church of St. Mary to sell alcohol at their church festival located on church grounds at 417 South Minnesota Street, parking lot adjacent to 5th South Street, and use of public way, right-of-way at 5th South Street between Minnesota Street and German Streets on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I will note that I jumped to 3.2, but we are on 3.1, the Temporary Liquor License for Church of St. Mary, which is where the motion and the second were made. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 3.2 is Temporary Liquor License for State Street Theater Company.
I'll motion to approve the issuance of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for State Street Theater Company for an event in the rear parking lot at 1 North State Street on Sunday, September 24th, 2023, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 3.3, A Tree Service License.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of a tree license, tree service license for Randy's Quality Tree Service owned by Randy Grusendorf, 204 Minnesota Street, Hanska, Minnesota, for the period beginning August 16th, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
Motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to reports from counselors, item 4.1, Summary of Business Conducted During Board and Commission Meetings.
I can start with the EDA. Probably our biggest decision there was the property that the EDA owns on the 300 block of North Broadway. There's several folks that are interested in that property, and we've asked them to come back to us with a proposal and to see how well it fits our guidelines for the EDA, so we'll see that coming up here, I would guess, the next month or two. Westridge Place, we, we did finish the lease agreement, but then there was a couple suggested changes, so we're waiting for that to come back to us. Am I correct? Yeah, we didn't see the final copy yet. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Schultz.
Due to lack of agenda items, there was no parking rec or heritage preservation meeting, so I don't have a whole lot to report.
Wow, who's giving you time off? Okay, thank you, I'll go to Counselor Wormka.
Yep, I have nothing new to report.
Okay.
And we had a welcome reception last Monday at, or last Tuesday, excuse me, at the Kegel Club for the Sister Cities to welcome Evelyn, and she's going to be working for the City of New Ulm and the EDA, and then for New Ulm Real Estate. And tomorrow, we're going to have a fundraiser at Cashwise Cooking Brats, so, and she'll be out there.
Perfect.
Come buy a brat.
And I had a chance to meet her yesterday as well, so, welcome. And Mayor, any updates?
I had the opportunity to meet with our legislators, Torkel Senate dames and doms at their request. Asked what the purpose of the meeting was, and it was to get to know each other, which I really appreciated that opportunity. I did invite our city manager to sit in on the meeting, because he's the one that has the details. Like he said to me, I do the schmoozing and he does the details. We had about an hour with them, and we were able to provide updates. Some of the items of interest for them were George's Ballroom, the mall, and Target. They wanted to know how we were doing on those projects. And then they also discussed the bonding coming up, the bonding bill, and they were supportive of our projects. And the lift station, Joe came into question, and that they were supporting that. So it was a great, great experience.
Great, thank you. And then on Friday, I had a chance to sit down with some of the representatives from Region 9 Development Commission, and we had some folks there from the MPCA just talking about some of the grant funding that's available for communities in regards to some of the sustainability efforts, some of the IIJA funding, and wanting to talk to us about what kind of projects we might have on tap and where they can help us with those resources. So there will be more to come on that. Any other updates? All right, thank you. 5.1, Report from the City Engineer Regarding the Proposed 2024 MSAS Improvement Project.
Thank you, Madam President, City Counselors. Before you tonight is a brief report on the 2024, the proposed 2024 MSAS Improvement Project. That project consists of the reconstruction of the roadway and utilities on 20th South Street from Broadway to the Minnesota River Bridge, Bridge Number 08520. The City of New Ulm was awarded just over $2 million in fiscal year 2024 ATP Small Urban Funds. We were made aware of that funding on March 31st of 2020. We awarded a professional services contract for engineering services to Bolton Mink in December of 2021, and we performed public outreach for the proposed project in September of 2022. In short, the report confirms that the improvements are necessary, feasible, and cost-effective, and they align with the city's complete streets policy and ADA transition plan. The project is anticipated to encourage competitive bidding from multiple contractors. This project will consist of reconstruction of the existing water main, sanitary sewer main, sewer and water end services, storm sewer modifications, reconstruction of the existing roadway section, which includes the excavation and replacement of subgrade, aggregate base, batuminous paving, pavement subdrains, concrete curb and gutter, pedestrian sidewalk ramps, street lighting, sidewalk reconstruction. New to this segment would be a batuminous recreational trail, pavement markings, turf restoration, and steel coating. Up on the screen, you have an exhibit that shows the project limits, and I'm going to try to zoom in on this a little bit to go through that in detail a little bit. This end, the Broadway end of the project, we are proposing to install a concrete median down centerline, similar to what the state had installed during the 2018 Gateway Project that was installed at this location while the detour was in fact. So that median would be installed, the roadway section would get a roadway diet similar to what 7th North had with that same Gateway Project, so one lane in each directions with that center left-hand turn lane. That would continue all the way to the bridge. And then also, know that on the north side of the roadway would be extension of the Batuminous Recreational Trail. Right now, that segment has sidewalks and really isn't conducive to completion of that bike loop, so this would provide an off-street facility, safer for users, and that would continue all the way to the bridge, and that would tie into the existing sidewalk that is on the Minnesota River Bridge. Right now, that segment doesn't have anything, so we felt it was important to provide that connectivity for users who want to go out and across the bridge. Bring up one, I got an additional exhibit that'll help show that a little bit more. Hopefully that pulls up here. Again, as you're all aware, the existing section there is two lanes of traffic in each direction with sidewalk on both sides of the road. So this was reviewed by the Safety Commission, and ultimately, they recommended the preferred typical section here that is shown with the median. So that median, again, would go from Broadway to about Bridge Street. That would prevent that conflict location at Minnesota Street and the Hy-Vee entrance where those are kind of offset. We had a significant crash history at that location, so this would separate that traffic and prevent those incidents. And then moving beyond that concrete median section, so really from Bridge Street to the bridge, would be that three-lane configuration, so one lane each direction with that center turn lane. Other alternatives, and again, this includes the off-street facilities, so the other alternative that the commission reviewed was really the same in nature, except it had on-street biking facilities, and they, the commission during their meeting recommended going away from that and having off-street facilities, just felt it was safer.
The engineer, I know you don't know, but estimated downtime with our new gateway in New Ulm going to open in October?
Very good question. So it is unfortunate that we'll get open and we will close it the next summer, but when we applied for this funding in this fiscal year, we weren't aware that the state found the funding to do Highway 14. So we are going to phase the project so we can focus on that Valley Street intersection, get that underground utility work, and try to get at least that intersection, get that open as soon as we can. And then from there, you know, it's, we're talking a good probably four or five months worth of duration on the project as a whole, but we are going to try to phase it to get that first segment open as quickly as we can, just to get traffic in the town, so.
Thank you.
But other than that, again, we're looking at the total project cost of about $5 million. We have that $2 million in ATP Small Urban Funding. $1.2 million will come from PUC Infrastructure Funding for the utility replacement, and the remaining will be MSAS funding, as this is a MSAS route. So I'd be happy to entertain any additional questions you may have, but that would conclude the staff report at this time.
I don't have any more questions, and I'm not really hearing any, and you did a really nice job explaining everything, and I'm impressed that the Safety Commission reviewed it also and had some input on it, especially with the bicycle train lane and stuff like that. So I'm going to offer a motion to adopt and acknowledge receiving the proposed 2024 MSAS Improvement Project Engineering Report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 6.1, A Conditional Use Permit for 627 South Broadway Street, Mr. Snowbrick.
Yes, members of the City Council, you considered this item at your August 1st meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the request. However, you took that action by motion, and it should have been done by resolution. And so we need to have you reapprove this particular request.
I'll offer the resolution approving with conditions a conditional use permit application of Paul and Janice Gorman to exceed the height limitation for a fence in the front yard area of 7th South Street on the front half of Lot 8, Block 72, South of Center Street. Street address for the property is 627 South Broadway.
Second.
Motion and a second, any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Betker?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item number 6.2, we will be taking the precisely same action on these variance requests, where we will be doing a resolution as opposed to a motion, and I will open it up to the counselors.
So at your last meeting, there were three parts to this particular variance request. And so the first part, you approved on a four-to-one vote with two conditions. And the two conditions were to pay the recording fee, and the second one was to take part of a 2019 motion and to bring that into this resolution, so then it's of record, and we file that then with the Brown County Recorder's Office. So that's why that was a condition that we added.
Thank you. Do we remember how we voted?
I'll.
I think we do. So yes, there were three parts of this, and I believe that we need a resolution for each section. Okay?
So I'll go ahead and offer the resolution approving with conditions the variance request from Fred and Laura Bianchi for the property generally described as part of lots 8 through 13, Block 11, North of Center Street, to reduce the front yard setback on North Valley Street from 20 feet to zero feet to facilitate the construction of a detached accessory building.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion regarding this portion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Oh.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Betker?
Yes, and 6.2B, we will move to, I will call that.
I'll offer the resolution denying the variance request of Fred and Laura Bianchi for the property generally described as part of lots 8 through 13, Block 11, North of Center Street, to increase the allowable size of the detached accessory building from 1,000 square feet to 1,200 square feet.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. I just want to point out that the first resolution was an approval, the second one is a denial, so make sure that your votes indicate. The second one is a denial, so make sure that your votes indicate such. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Nope.
Oh, sorry, yes, no. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
No.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
No.
Councilor Wormka?
No.
You were a yes.
You were a yes.
Oh, we're denying the variance?
Yes.
Let's do a recall over again.
Okay, so I'll just reread it into the record again. So offer the resolution denying the variance request of Fred and Laura Bianchi for the property generally described as part B of lots 8 through 13, Block 11, north of
Our attorney's looking nervous.
Center Street to increase the allowable size of a detached accessory building from 1,000 square feet to 1,200 square feet. Mr. Scott, would you like to interject?
I think you've got it, Council President.
Okay.
The affirmative is a vote to deny the variance for this in the next resolution.
Correct. All right, so that being said, we did have a motion and a second on the table. No additional discussion. We will attempt, Director Jorgensen, to call the roll one more time.
Councilor Mack?
No.
Councilor Christian?
Yes is voting for denial.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
No.
And President Becker?
Yes, and that motion does carry. We will go to 6.2C, the resolution, again, denying the variance request of Fred and Laura Bianchi for the property generally described as parts, part of lots 8 through 13, Block 11, north of Center Street, to increase the maximum height of a detached accessory building from 16 feet to 23 feet.
Well, I know you can't make a motion, so we're going to have to do it over again. So I'll offer the resolution denying the variance request of Fred and Laura Bianchi for the property generally described as part of lots 8 through 13, Block 11, north of Center Street, to increase the maximum height of a detached accessory building from 16 feet to 23 feet. Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
No.
Councilor Christian?
Yes, denial.
Council Schultz?
Yes.
And Council Wormka?
No.
And President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 7.1, under new business, 2022 Utility Street and Alley Improvement Project Final Assessments.
Madam President, City Councilors, this is just the, setting the public hearing date for September 19th for the final assessments on the 2022 USA project and the adoption of those assessments, which are included within your packet.
Motion to approve, motion to approve the final assessment rolls for the 2022 Utility Street Alley Improvements Project. Set a public hearing date for Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, at 4:30 PM.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Mr. Sahtam, would you like me to read the items into the record or prefer?
No need.
Do that at the public hearing? Perfect, thank you. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Item number 7.2, 18th South Street Storm Sewer Lift Station Professional Services Contract.
Madam President, City Councilors, give some brief background on this request. This hasn't come before you previously. So Bolton Mink provided professional services for design, project administration, and construction observation of the Minnesota flood, Minnesota River levee in 2011 through 2012. As you're aware, during flooding events, the city is required to close the floodgates, and that would prevent river floodwater from coming back and to the protected side of the levee. When this occurs, our street department personnel closes the floodgates and sets up portable pumps to pump snow melt and storm sewer runoff from the protected side of the levee to the riverside. There have been many instances where staff has almost lost equipment due to the amount of snow melt and/or rainwater on the protected side of the levee. So with that, there's always been a wish that we would have a storm sewer lift station that would take care of this for us at this location. We wouldn't have to halt pumps down there or spend staff overtime to make sure everything's filled with fuel and check the pumps and things of that nature. So with that, I applied for federal fiscal year 2024 congressionally directed spending, funding with the offices of Senator Smith and Klobuchar under FEMA pre-disaster mitigation projects. Much to our surprise, we were notified at the end of July that our project was selected to move forward by the Senate and/or House Appropriations Committee with anticipated funding of $1.125 million of the anticipated $1.5 million total, $1.5 million total project cost. Congress returns to session in September, and is expected that a bill will be signed before the end of the year. One thing to note, funding is not finalized until we are included in that final bill that gets signed. So due to the anticipated funding coming to us, we would like to award this contract to Bolton and Mink on a contingent approval that we received of funding, but they would assist with the design and specification work for this storm sewer lift station. As they have the experience with the levee and all the floodgates and everything like that, we felt it was for ease of transition and whatnot that we award this contract to them. They did prepare a proposal for this work, and that is included for your review as well. The proposed fee amount is just under $150,000. I have adjusted my 2024 budget request, which we'll be discussing at the work session, but that is included in the 2024 budget request to include this contract. Bolton and Mink is okay with the award being contingent on the federal funding being awarded. So it's kind of a good news, bad news, as we have money coming to us, hopefully. But we do have the professional services that will go along with that funding as well, so. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
I just wanted to say thank you for preparing all the information for this project and getting it noticed and included, so very good work, thank you.
Right, thank you.
A big chunk of change. I have a question. Why is this not in front of PUC instead of us?
The storm sewer system's ours, so, yeah.
Okay, all right. Should it be? It just seems like it fits more in their world than our world.
It's, I guess, I think, I don't, I'm not aware of a private utility that has a storm sewer system. It's generally the municipalities, yeah.
Just curious.
And we have all the permitting for the MS4 permits and all that stuff. Take care of all the stormwater permits, and so the city is the permitted agency, not the utility.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all the work you've done on this. And I'll go ahead and make a motion to award contract to Bolton and Mink Incorporated to provide professional services for the design of a storm sewer lift station at 18th South Street and the Minnesota River levee contingent on the city receiving FEMA pre-disaster mitigation funding.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 7.3, Herman Fest 2023 Requests.
Thank you, Council President Becker and councilors. Herman Fest is scheduled for Saturday, September 9th this year, and the Herman Monument Society is asking for temporary road closure between Garden Street, or between Center Street, between Garden Street and Highland. Now that I confused everyone. Additionally, discharge of cannon and fireworks during the event. Fireworks at Herman Heights Park during the event, and the fire department to remain on standby during the event. This is the 11th year now of the Herman Monument Society operating Herman Fest with no significant changes again this year. They are a very professional nonprofit group to work with that puts on a safe community event for the community. So staff would recommending approving this, but I'm here for any questions that you may have.
I've got just one thought. I thought last year we had a little discussion on this, or maybe the year before, about Garden Street at the end of the fireworks, just being a lot of congestion and safety for people trying to cross the street to say that they were parked at the Vogel Arena, for example, or, you know, I know it's just, it's kind of make, making awareness of it, and maybe, you know, law enforcement or just directing the traffic. I don't know if Dave would have any input on that, our chief, or in regards to that, or?
I mean, I'll just attest as somebody that lived very, very close to that and have gone down there to watch Herman Fest. I've seen many, many people, many, many near accidents in that area just because it's dark. We do have the barriers out there, though, kind of the slowdown barriers now, and those will still be up.
Yeah. Madam President, City Councilors, the temporary pilot project that is down there will remain through, it's, we're scheduled to take it down October 2nd, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I was kind of talking about like Center Street and Garden more, you know, just people trying to cross the street, and once that road opens up, it gets to be, you know, is what.
It's very unsafe, I think.
Yeah.
President Becker and members of the council, I mean, we certainly, you know, we could, like literally, or you think about shutting down the road for pedestrian crossing?
Just to get the people?
Kind of like a, like maybe a road guard or something like that?
Something like that, maybe to help direct traffic a little bit, if people are,
To accommodate that.
You know, try to accommodate it. I just, you know, I wouldn't want an accident to happen, but it's, you know, it's just making awareness, and I think it's, might be worth trying something.
We could certainly accommodate that.
Especially after the event.
After the event is the big deal. Is this when the fireworks are done?
And I don't know about a street closure, is every, you know, there are vehicles that are going to try to get places, but some type of traffic direction or police presence, I think, would slow some people down, because there's people that have real, I mean, they really zip through, they're just not thinking, so.
One challenge that we sometimes have, and we're kind of careful with, you know, if we're going to like, it's either do a lot or do nothing, as far as the safety thing. I mean, we always have a presence, but, you know, like if we're just there with our flashing lights on, I mean, actually, sometimes that can actually be counterproductive because they're seeing the flashing, that's what they're focused on, and now here's the pedestrian crossing. So like if, if, you know, we could, you know, looking maybe for those recommendations, if you want us to, when I say closing down like Center Street, it would be like a squad blocking it, and then like literally like a road guard, an officer with a vest on, getting people through, and then we stop the pedestrians and we open it up again. If that's, you know, if you think that would be helpful?
I think we leave it up to you.
Because that would be a very safe way of handling that.
Whatever you feel would be prudent.
I think that would be the best way to do it, too.
Your recommendation.
Yeah, we'll leave it up to you to.
I'm just happy to do that.
You know, and it might only be a half hour just for the people to clear out, but it's just, it gets really congested there pretty fast.
So is that the recommendation? Because we, I'd be happy to accommodate it. As far as a safety standpoint, that would be how I'd want to execute it.
Yep.
Yes.
Our recommendation. Your recommendation.
Okay.
So much, chief.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
I'll offer the resolution authorizing Herman Monument Society to temporarily close Center Street between Garden Street and Highland Avenue on Saturday, September 9th, 2023, from 8:15 to 9:00 PM to accommodate the fireworks discharge during Herman Fest.
Continue.
And?
And?
Come on.
And authorize request by the Herman Monument Society for the following during Herman Fest on Saturday, September 9th, 2023, at Herman Heights and Herman Parks. One, grant an exception to City Code Section 8.20, Subdivision 3, to allow the discharge of cannon and fireworks during the event. Number two, authorize the discharge of fireworks at Herman Heights Park during the event. Permission is required as the city is the owner. Number three, to allow the fire department to remain on standby at the fireworks discharge site should the services be required. This does not include crowd control or fireworks discharge activities. Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Been doing that.
We have been, there is quite a bit.
More as a point of recognition, I guess, than?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so.
I can go down the list here.
Thank you, Councilor Mack.
I've got a long list here.
It's a long one, you can do it.
All right. So on 4-6 anonymous, $20. 4-10, I've got a, not coming up too clear here, but Michael Partner, $275. We've got McDonald's. My screen is not showing, I think it's.
It's like nine.
I think it's 9:30. And we've got the Optimus Club for 5:48, anonymous for $20, Noel Mary Foundation for $300, Noel Mary Foundation for $129.47, Betty and Doug Royger for $50. We've got, uh,
Cleveland.
I can't.
Cleveland.
Cleveland, Jay and Lenance Spence for $100, anonymous, $105, Dan and Trudy Berneck for $30, Marie Golden, it looks like, $10, New Ulm Public Library staff, $100, Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, $402, Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, $400, Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, $1,445, Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, $400, Delbert and Judy Dunlap, $50, and
Bull?
Bull, $25, anonymous, $50, anonymous, $100, Tom and Patricia Larry, $50, New Ulm Public Library, $100, anonymous, $25, L. Ray Ubel, $27, for a total of, I believe it's $5,633.47, as I'm interpreting it online, when I'm trying to blow it up here, so.
Thank you. I just, I'm showing 5,689.47. I don't know if Nicole, you can confirm that?
I can't see.
I can't.
Okay.
It's hard to read.
$5,689.47.
All right.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you all so much. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 7.5, B&amp;L Bar Alley Closure for an ALS Fundraiser.
I'll offer the resolution authorizing the tempor, to temporarily close the alley next to the establishment for an ALS fundraiser on Thursday, August 24th, 2023, beginning at 3:45 PM to 1 AM on Friday, August 25th, 2023, and authorize the extension of the B&amp;L Bar Liquor License into the closed alley area on the requested dates to allow alcohol to be consumed, subject to conditions.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Our last item of today is item number 7.6, a special assessment interest rate for projects financed by the 2023 bonds.
Councilors, this is an item that we do annually after the bonds are sold. The, the interest rate that's set on the assessments for the projects that are done in 2023, they'll be certified in '24. We usually set that interest rate about 2% more than what we pay on the bonds. So this year, we sold the bonds at 3.2%, so we are recommending a 5% interest rate on the assessments.
Thank you.
I'll offer the resolution, or offer the resolution authorizing you set an interest rate at 5% for special assessments leveraged for project financed by general obligation permanent improvement revolving fund bonds, Series 2023.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry with no additional business. Today's meeting is adjourned. We will move into a work session momentarily.